Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the July 20th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three members, and I'm going to ask Mr. Scott France to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to begin my remarks this morning by addressing the train derailment that took place in White Marsh Township. On the morning of July 17th, a CSX train was traveling on a Norfolk Southern Line through Montgomery County. Our emergency communication center received a call at 4:55 a.m. that a train had derailed. Shortly thereafter, White Marsh Township officials requested representatives from our Department of Public Safety's Emergency Management Division and UAV team at the scene, as well as a full team dispatch of the hazardous materials response team. Our UAV team, which stands for unmanned aerial vehicle, was used to drone to locate the train, as well as to observe the extent of damage. And our highly trained hazmat team then walked along the tracks, inspecting the rail cars for signs of damage, and checking for any leaks of material that the train was carrying. There was no leakage of any hazardous material. Norfolk Southern has reopened the tracks to rail traffic, and the PA Department of Environmental Protection continues to maintain the site while work is being done to clear the area. I'm proud of the rapid response by our county team. We always stand ready to assist our municipal partners with the coordination of and response to incidents like this. And on behalf of the county, I'd like to thank the Barron Hill Fire Company, White Marsh Township Police Department, White Marsh Ambulance, and our County Department of Public Safety, and all of the first responders who worked diligently over the hours following the incident to protect the safety of our citizens. July marks the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and July 26th is recognized as National Disability Independence Day. This month's recognition is intended to celebrate the history of the disability rights movement and people with disabilities as positive contributors to our workplace and communities. There are more than 53,000 individuals in Montgomery County that have some type of disability, such as hearing, vision, cognition, ambulation, just walking. And we're very fortunate here to have our dedicated Office of Mental Health Developmental Disabilities Early Intervention, which serves more than 3,200 individuals in the county with developmental disabilities. Here at the county, we've worked very hard to make our parks, facilities, and workplaces more accessible and inclusive, and we've helped to educate our employees through the DEI Speaker Series events. Please remember this month, and always, to remember the positive contributions that every citizen in our society makes. And I'd like to update everyone on the results of our Food Fight Food Drive to benefit the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. The drive was held from June 5th through June 30th in six county site locations with the goal of collecting 1,500 pounds of food. In the end, the drive collected a total of 1,680 pounds of food. And this number is actually an undercount of the total donated, because some of our residents receiving services or visiting some of the sites were so food insecure that they were given food on the spot before the collection ended. I want to thank the site coordinators Scott Callison, Tracy Flynn, Teresa Rhines, Kristi Sharp, Darrell Lewis, and especially Lisa Erbs Oldensky for coordinating the whole project. And we want to thank MON, who continues their work every day to help feed our residents in need. And now I'm going to announce this month's Way to Go Monco winners. The Way to Go Monco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 170 county employees have submitted nominations singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employees from the list of nominations, and each wins $150 after taxes in their paycheck in recognition of their work. So here are this month's winners. Diane James, who is a resource and referral specialist who works in our Early Learning Research Center. Her submission says Diane never fails to put in extra effort for our clients in the ELRC, and all of us agree Diane is awesome. Next, we have Bridget Jacobs, a district clerk, district court clerk, who works in the West Conshawken and Upper Marianne Township District Court 38109. Her coworkers say Bridget is very knowledgeable and detailed worker. She is cheerful, kind, and very pleasant when helping customers. Her ability to keep our court upbeat is an asset to all of us. Next, Laura Erskine, a senior deposition clerk in the clerk of courts. Her submission says Lauren always steps in to help without waiting to be asked. If one of her coworkers is out sick, Lauren will take the time to make sure they don't fall behind by taking some of the workload. She's truly a great coworker and a great role model. And then next, Human Resources Benefit Specialist Karen DeFrancesco. Her nomination reads Karen is very helpful and diligent. When one of our employees ran into an issue with their healthcare benefits and it seemed they were at a dead end, Karen jumped in and got the problem solved quickly and efficiently. And our fifth and final winner this month is Anna Trout. Anna is in our Office of Mental Health and is the program director for crisis and diversion. Her nomination says Anna pioneered the Montgomery County Veteran Response Team, the very first of its kind in the state of Pennsylvania. Her contributions in the way of planning, organizing, training, and collaborating are in the highest traditions of public service. I want to congratulate all of our Way to Go Monco July winners. And then finally, I want to wish good luck to all the wheels of justice team members led by our district attorney Kevin Steele, who will ride 65 miles this weekend from the Benjamin Franklin Bridge to Atlantic City to benefit the families behind the badge, Children's Foundation, and the Montgomery County Hero Fund. And that concludes my comments. I turn it over to Vice Chair Winder.
Great, thank you Commissioner Lawrence, and congratulations to all of our Way to Go winners, and good morning. First, I wanted to speak briefly about Medicaid. Since the COVID-19 emergency ended in April, a small percentage of families have been losing their coverage. In more than half the cases, that's because the family's income is higher than the program allows. But in many cases, the recipient simply hasn't completed the paperwork, because during the emergency, they didn't have to. But if you are a Medicaid recipient, you can't afford to lose this protection. The program is operated by the state, so the quickest way to get back into the program is to go to the PA Department of Human Services website and fill out the form. But for those who need more information, please call Montgomery County Assistance Office at 610-270-3500. If you prefer to visit in person, the office is located at 1931 New Hope Street in Norristown. Finally, if you need help filling out forms for Medicaid or chip coverage for your kids, you can contact our community partner, Children First, at 215-563-5848. They can help you in English and Spanish. Again, don't allow yourself or your family to go without health insurance. Next, I'd like to talk about our roads and bridges heroes. Here at the county, we have a great team of people out in the field, working to make sure all of our county roads and bridges are safe for all of our residents and visitors to travel on. On June 28th, safety took on a new meaning for two of our roads and bridges workers who were on Unionville Pike, checking on concrete work they had done earlier that morning. On their way to the site, Ron Williams and Mike Bailey observed an elderly man with a walker who was sitting on the sidewalk and looked like he wasn't well and needed help. When they asked if he was okay, he replied that he was having a heart attack, so they called 911. Ron and Mike stayed with and comforted this victim while he waited for the ambulance to arrive and take him to the hospital. I would like to commend our green lanes, laying roads and bridges workers, Ron and Mike, for their compassionate response to this resident. I'm not sure how much medical training they may have, but I think it would be nerve-wracking, I know it would be for me, to try and comfort or help a stranger in a life or death situation. The bottom line is that this resident may not have even made it to the hospital without the help of these two employees, and their efforts are to be commended. Ron and Mike went above and beyond their duties, and we hope that their efforts were lifesaving, and that man is doing well. Thank you also to Roads and Bridges Administrator Tom O'Brien and Foreman Steve for bringing this to our attention. Lastly, I want to talk about back to school. I can't believe it's back to school season almost. We are still early in the summer, well, not really, halfway through summer, but back to school season is coming soon. Education is a top issue for me, and it's important that as a community, we don't allow students to fall behind just because of their lack of essential school supplies. We all know how expensive school supplies can be, especially if you are already struggling to make ends meet. Two of our county offices are coordinating back to school drives to help reduce the burden that some of our families have and send their kids to school with everything they need. Our Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services is collecting supplies for low-income families in their program offices. In addition, Montgomery County Court Child Care is collecting items for children of clients in the Laurel House Shelter, the Women's Center, and Court Child Care. The needed supplies run a gamut. Families need binders, pocket folders, crayons, regular and colored pencils, pens, rulers, calculators, you name it, and pencil cases. Donations can be left at two locations. The main entrance to the Montgomery County Human Services Center at 1430 DeKalb Street in Norristown now through August 23rd, or the lobby of this building, 1 Montgomery Plaza on Sweet Street in Norristown, starting July 24th through August 15th. Thank you to our mission-driven employees who are organizing these events on behalf of our residents. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'd also like to take a moment to thank and express my appreciation to all the personnel that responded to the train derailment that took place in White Marsh Township this week. When that first occurred, there was a lot of great uncertainty, and our first responders, the White Marsh Township Police, all those local fire departments, the Department of Public Safety here in the county, the hazmat team, truly did a great job to respond to that scenario, and I'm proud of the hard work and their efficiency. Fortunately, there was no damage to the environment or no harm to anyone there, so I look forward to the cleanup, but again, I express my gratitude as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to announcements. It is Immunization Awareness Month. Ms. Hennessy.
Good morning. My name's Maureen Hennessy. I serve as chair of the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition. Very pleased to be here with you today and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Here's the next. If you could proceed. I did put together a short PowerPoint just with some information. So I'll just start, okay? And you can catch up. I don't want to hold things up. The Montgomery County Immunization Coalition was formed in July of 2003 by a group of dedicated individuals representing various county offices, including the Office of Public Health, Senior Services, Child Care Information Services, as well as our local schools, hospital systems, pharmaceutical companies, nonprofit organizations, and community representatives from across Montgomery County. Our mission is to promote age-appropriate immunizations across the lifespan for all residents of Montgomery County. Next, our MCIC Steering Committee includes myself, Maureen on the chair. I actually work at Mainline Health System. Susan Wenwick, who is our vice chair, she's with the Montgomery County Office of Senior Services, and she is very upset that she couldn't be here today, but she's active with her local softball league and is out supporting the girls' team, so she just wanted me to acknowledge that to you all. She's a great advocate of our work. Kalen Roberts, who is with us this morning, is the treasurer of our group, and she's with Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Sierra Gomez is also with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Beth Till, who's with us this morning, she's our MCIC Program Manager. Lynn Timby works with Moderna, one of our pharmaceutical partners, and Gail Wright is with GCC Associates LLC Consulting. Next. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Ruth Cole, who slipped in here. She's with the Office of Public Health, and she's a huge advocate of ours and works very closely with us. So some of our major accomplishments over the past, excuse me, the past three years, we have been able to secure a few streams of funding through the Pennsylvania Immunization Coalition, as well as some federal dollars, which have enabled us to do unprecedented work in our communities with our many trusted partners. This funding has also enabled us to actually hire a full-time program manager, being Beth Till, and that's the first time we've had funds to be able to have that type of support, which was greatly appreciated during the COVID pandemic. Next. Next, please. Okay. We have also been able to, sorry, we've also developed a flu and COVID-19 committee, which has now grown to 116 partner organizations. We've held over 20 town hall, community town hall events, which have been very well attended and helped us to educate our community with reliable information regarding not only the COVID-19 vaccines, but also age-appropriate vaccinations. We've collaborated with our pharmacy partners and did over 250 community clinics, and we also secured billboard and digital campaigns where we partnered with media locations and did a number of bus ads with SEPTA. Next slide will show the results of some of that work. So it was exciting to see our message out in the community through these various means. Next. Our mascot is Victor Vaccines. Some of you may be, you should be familiar with him. He's undergone a makeover with some of our grant funds this year, so he's looking good and he's out in the community and helping us to engage with children and families. Next picture, next slide, please. Here are some of the photos from some of those events where we go out and meet with the people where they are and educate them on the various vaccinations and opportunities for them. Next slide, please. Here are some other pictures of some of the events that we've been attending, and Victor has been as well. Next, please. Many of our educational resources and informational materials have actually been shared across the state nationally and internationally, so that's pretty exciting when you see our things showing up across the internet, and it helps us spread the word to all. We're also grateful for the support of our trusted partners in translating many of our materials into various languages, which again, makes them more accessible to folks across the county. Next. Here are some of those examples again, and we've actually gotten accommodations from the White House for our work, which is really, we're very proud of that. Next. So August is National Immunization Awareness Month. We appreciate this opportunity to remind all individuals to ensure that we are all up to date on our immunizations, and we are coming up to back to school time, as was stated earlier. We will be holding an Ask the Experts event on Zoom on this topic. That'll be held on Tuesday, August 15th at 7:00 p.m., so folks are encouraged to join us if they're interested. Next, please.
It is Immunization Awareness Month. Ms. Hennessy.
Good morning. My name's Maureen Hennessy. I serve as Chair of the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition. Very pleased to be here with you today and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Here's the next. I did put together a short PowerPoint just with some information. So I'll just start, okay? And you can catch up. I don't want to hold things up. The Montgomery County Immunization Coalition was formed in July of 2003 by a group of dedicated individuals representing various county offices, including the Office of Public Health, Senior Services, Child Care Information Services, as well as our local schools, hospital systems, pharmaceutical companies, nonprofit organizations, and community representatives from across Montgomery County. Our mission is to promote age-appropriate immunizations across the lifespan for all residents of Montgomery County. Next. Our MCIC Steering Committee includes myself, Maureen on the chair. I actually work at Mainline Health System. Susan Wenwick, who is our Vice Chair, she's with the Montgomery County Office of Senior Services, and she is very upset that she couldn't be here today, but she's active with her local softball league and is out supporting the girls' team. So she just wanted me to acknowledge that to you all. She's a great advocate of our work. Kalen Roberts, who is with us this morning, is the Treasurer of our group, and she's with Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Sierra Gomez is also with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Beth Till, who's with us this morning, she's our MCIC Program Manager. Lynn Timby works with Moderna, one of our pharmaceutical partners. And Gail Wright is with GCC Associates LLC Consulting. Next. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Ruth Cole, who slipped in here. She's with the Office of Public Health, and she's a huge advocate of ours and works very closely with us. So some of our major accomplishments over the past three years, we have been able to secure a few streams of funding through the Pennsylvania Immunization Coalition, as well as some federal dollars, which have enabled us to do unprecedented work in our communities with our many trusted partners. This funding has also enabled us to actually hire a full-time program manager, being Beth Till, and that's the first time we've had funds to be able to have that type of support, which was greatly appreciated during the COVID pandemic. Next, please. Okay. We have also been able to, sorry. We've also developed a Flu and COVID-19 Committee, which has now grown to 116 partner organizations. We've held over 20 Town Hall, Community Town Hall events, which have been very well-attended and helped us to educate our community with reliable information regarding not only the COVID-19 vaccines, but also age-appropriate vaccinations. We've collaborated with our pharmacy partners and did over 250 community clinics. And we also secured billboard and digital campaigns where we partnered with media locations and did a number of bus ads with SEPTA. Next slide will show the results of some of that work. So it was exciting to see our message out in the community through these various means. Next. Our mascot is Victor Vaccines. Some of you maybe, you should be familiar with him. He's undergone a makeover with some of our grant funds this year. So he's looking good, and he's out in the community and helping us to engage with children and families. Next picture, next slide, please. Here are some of the photos from some of those events where we go out and meet with the people where they are and educate them on the various vaccinations and opportunities for them. Next slide, please. Here are some other pictures of some of the events that we've been attending, and Victor has been as well. Next, please. Many of our educational resources and informational materials have actually been shared across the state, nationally and internationally. So that's pretty exciting when you see our things showing up across the Internet, and it helps us spread the word to all. We're also grateful for the support of our trusted partners in translating many of our materials into various languages, which again, makes them more accessible to folks across the county. Here are some of those examples again, and we've actually gotten accommodations from the White House for our work, which is really, we're very proud of that. So August is National Immunization Awareness Month. We appreciate this opportunity to remind all individuals to ensure that we are all up to date on our immunizations. And we are coming up to back-to-school time, as was stated earlier. We will be holding an Ask the Experts event on Zoom on this topic. That'll be held on Tuesday, August 15th, at 7:00 PM. So folks are encouraged to join us if they're interested. Next, please. So we're grateful for your support, the county commissioners, the county's support, as well as the support of many trusted partners that we have engaged, and we are so proud to serve Montgomery County. So thank you for your time. The next slide has our contact information and also our media locations, so.
Maureen, thank you for being here this morning. Thank you for your leadership. It was great to be back in person for the dinner this year as well. I haven't seen Victor with his new look yet in person, so I'm looking forward to that. And I guess if it's back-to-school, as Commissioner Winder said, then I got to get my flu shot soon.
Yes, flu time is coming too. Yes, thank you so much.
But thank you for the work that you do all year round, and your whole team express our thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. And now, we are going to have Stephanie Landis, who's going to speak about Pretrial, Probation, and Parole Supervision Week. Morning, Ms. Landis.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner Lawrence. Vice, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Winder and Commissioner Gail. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to acknowledge National Probation, Parole, and Pretrial Supervision Week. I appreciate the opportunity to highlight some of the important and meaningful work that is happening in Supervision Services. Community supervision is an essential and critical part of our criminal justice system. Community supervision's primary focus is rehabilitation and community safety. We strongly believe in a person's ability to change, that they can do better when afforded the appropriate resources and opportunities. Many people just need a chance. Community supervision is an alternative to incarceration, which provides individuals the opportunity to work, attend school, remain engaged with their families, and make restitution to victims of their crimes. Our adult probation officers, treatment court officers, juvenile probation officers, and pretrial officers are committed to implementing evidence-based practices and strategies to support safe and successful outcomes for those in our community supervision. We are committed to least restrictive measures and believe incarceration is our last resort when community safety is compromised and all other strategies have been unsuccessful. We prioritize diversion when applicable and utilize youth aid panels, drug treatment court, behavioral health court, and our Veterans Treatment Court program. In the beginning of July, the courts commenced the Detention Hearing Officer Program. A detention hearing officer reviews every adult probation detainer lodged at MCCF within five days of detention. The probationer or parolee is represented by the public defender's office, and the district attorney and probation officer are present and provide their input for the DHO's consideration. Many times, an agreement among parties is established providing a joint recommendation for final disposition at the detention hearing. These initiatives, along with the multi-departmental commitment to least restrictive measures, has safely reduced the jail population by more than 50% over the last few years. Our officers are an integral part of the criminal justice system. Without the community supervision's buy-in and belief in least restrictive measures, these initiatives would be unlikely to produce positive outcomes we're seeing. Our emphasis on least restrictive measures results in more individuals in the community with complex needs, requiring a higher level of officer intervention. It's imperative we attract and qualify, we attract qualified candidates for employment and retain the highly skilled officers in our department. We are grateful for the contract settled with our represented employees. However, this further exacerbates the existing compression of our supervisors and administrators. We are grateful the county is committed to the compensation study and eagerly await its outcomes. I represent a group of very committed professionals who work tirelessly to mentor, coach, and guide individuals on community supervision. These officers are change agents. They work in collaboration with the police, mental health and drug and alcohol providers, as well as numerous community partners. Our goal is to exist in rehabilitation and safe and successful reintegration of defendants into a community. Our officers are dedicated and passionate about their work. Community supervision officers are helpers. We're fixers. The only reason one gets into this field is because we have a strong desire to help people and make our communities a better place. We take pride in the successful outcomes of our caseloads. Our successful outcomes are witnessing a person reap the benefit of their sobriety, the reunification of a parent with their child, a family's restored trust, increased school attendance, improved grades, employment, entering college, or a person starting on a path to achieve a goal that once seemed impossible due to substance use disorder, a mental health issue, or any of a number of challenges that are faced by people we work with every day. The opportunity to participate in that journey is what brings our officers to work every day. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our very committed and professional support staff. Their duties go far beyond clerical work. They interact with individuals on supervision, supporting them, encouraging them, and celebrating their successes. Our officers are change agents, and they work tirelessly to keep our community safe. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with this dedicated and committed group of professionals. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Landis, I want to thank you personally for your leadership of the department, and everyone but yourself. But I know you work tirelessly, and you're a fierce advocate for your employees, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now going to move on to public comment. We have adopted new public comment guidelines or will based on best practices, and they are in effect now. So Ms. Harris, if you want to call the first speaker.
I have an objection.
Please start, Ms. Brachio, at his time.
There's no time on objections, Ken, and you know that. This is not a public comment. This is an objection.
Yeah, no, this is during public comment.
You going to argue with me? It's an objection and nothing more right now. And I will get up and make my public comment when I am called.
The clock is starting.
There's no clock on objections, sir.
It's running, so you can talk.
And it's not taking away from our public comment time either. This is not public comment time. This is objection. I'm not first on the list. I don't know where you came from, but you're obviously not up to date. So this is not in effect today because you have not approved it. You can say whatever it is you want, but until this is actually officially approved, it is not supposed to be used right now. That is my objection. Thank you.
I'm not relinquishing my time for public comment, and this does not count against it.
Call the next speaker, please, Ms. Harris.
The next speaker is David Morgan.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. My first comment relates to E, the new public comment policy. I'm concerned because we're going from four minutes with a break to three minutes, which is a 25% reduction in our freedom of speech. And of all time, this is the month we celebrate freedom, 4th of July, which is a special right we have in America. So that's a downgrade from way long ago when we had five minutes. So that's just not the right time to do this. And I actually tabled this idea until vacations are over and people can really address this, come back in September. Then, the fact that this is happening in summer, as I mentioned, is a concern because we can just have time to regroup our thoughts if we have a break between our comments. I have three subjects. The second one is I-5 on the agenda related to RFI for Health and Wellness for Unhoused Individuals. And I look at the newspaper and see the pictures of where the community had housing before it ended in Norristown Farm Park area. And there's ample space there. It's a facility with plumbing, trash collection services, et cetera. And Norristown is benefiting from having the county campus plan. Why hasn't something been worked out so that the people are comfortable and don't have their lives risked on the Schuylkill River unhoused? So I think maybe to really look at this whole issue with some 40 people reviewing it and really see what we can do to help the people live and thrive. And then, the L-4 comment I have is related to Justice Center signage. This L-4, I don't know what the sign's going to say, but it's another expense for the Justice Center. And the Justice Center in 2021 had a summer expenditure of $232 million. $232 million, which was 180-some over the $50 million budgeted for the year in one meeting. So again, any Justice Center cost, maybe we should look at them in September because we are paying our 21% increase in taxes, largely driven by this county campus plan with hundreds of millions involved. So I am though happy to report something in my last 20 seconds, that the buses do have signs for maternity care coalition on them, which is part of the Monco Mamas Plan. And Monco Mamas was on the side of a bus I just saw this morning, a 96 coming to Norristown. So I commend the commissioners that that word is getting out, that we can help Black women and others thrive, have healthy birth outcomes, ending abortion hopefully in Montgomery County, and have healthy lives. So only 17,000, a lot of it for that, but with a 2,000 increase, small, but at least something. Thank you.
Next is Barbara Furman.
Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. I'm speaking on the proposal to further limit our time in our First Amendment speech rights at meetings. With all due respect to the two kings and a queen, your subjects have had it with your superfluous rules. Just as the number-one job of the federal government is to keep us safe, Montgomery County elected commissioners are charged with the number-one running fair elections, which have been the subject of concern for many years. Mail-in ballots, for instance, as a teacher, remind me of a take-home test. No one, I can't be sure who answered those questions. Open space in this beautiful county is being eaten up by sometimes greedy developers. They can be nice, but their bottom line is just making lots of money. And they're only interested in that. Not always out in the open, but behind closed doors. Elected officials are charged with keeping all transactions transparent. The people's concerns of Montgomery County are the business of bimonthly meetings, not the political agenda of the day or month. A citizen's medical freedom is not respected when months like this one are highlighted. If you would venture outside of your castle to other local municipal meetings, you might see elected township officials bringing up a subject like a housing development or flooding and how to fix the problem, and then supervisors asking the audience if they had concerns, and then listening to them and acting for we, the people. Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Ferry.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Liz Ferry, and I'm a resident of Upper Dublin Township. And I'm also a township commissioner in Upper Dublin. And I just wanted to note regarding the new guidelines around public comment. So in Upper Dublin, we allow unlimited time for both public comment for issues that are on the agenda and issues that are not on the agenda at separate times. And we have a great dialogue with residents, and residents are allowed to raise their concerns. And we go back and forth. We don't talk to the solicitor, and the solicitor doesn't respond for us. So to restore faith in government, we really believe at the local level we should allow citizens to speak for really as long as they want, within reason, and talk to the issues of concern to them and their community, whether or not it's on the agenda. Thanks very much.
Next, we have Pauline Brachio.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Brachio. I'm going to talk about the immunizations. I don't know that that is so important now that COVID is supposedly not a pandemic anymore. I'm not sure what the flu shot does for anybody. I don't ever get a flu shot, and I don't ever get the flu. Gardasil is also dangerous for the children who are receiving it. I'm not sure why people are not up on the data with vaccines. You know, I actually took the shingles vaccine and the pneumonia vaccine because I have asthma, and I had chickenpox as a child, so I'm more likely to get shingles. But these other vaccines, especially the new ones, are really beyond ridiculous with the way they have not been actually tested out completely. And we're seeing so many results of people literally dropping dead. Athletes, people who are in top physical fitness, and they are dropping dead and not being able to even have time to get to the hospital because they're like dead when they hit the floor. So I really wish that people would start paying attention to what is happening. And, you know, I know people who have gotten five COVID shots. Please, you know, if they're not going to work with one, they're not going to work with 15 either. As far as the flu shots go, they're a hit or a miss. We've already had that conversation before. So, you know, I'm just not sure why you are pushing immunizations now. And as far as, you know, the aging department, we already know from Jenny, I can't pronounce her last name, with her mother, you know, what has happened to her. And I don't think the aging department for seniors has even improved one little bit. So it's really, you're not treating the residents of this county properly. Certainly, you're not giving us any respect when we come up to the podium. You know, I don't know. Are you Ray McGarry? I'm not sure who you are. I don't know what happened to Josh Stein. But you know what? I'd rather see Josh Stein sitting there. I'd rather see Josh Stein sitting there. At least I know what to expect. So I'm just really confused by why you're doing, well, I'm not really confused, let's face it. The reason you're making it three minutes instead of four is because you don't care about what any, what anyone has to say about this county. You want to do what you want because you're Mr. Big Shot, you know, you're not coming back. Shapiro didn't want you because you're not going to Harrisburg. You know, you're basically a felony rapist and that's all you're ever going to be, you know? So why you are still here is beyond my comprehension because men who have done way less than rape were ejected from their governmental positions and you should not be here. You just should not be here. So it's really a shame and that you are endorsed by a rapist is really, really sad. Jamila, absolutely heartbreaking. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom DiBello.
Tom DiBello, Limerick Township. Really wasn't going to comment, but when I came in and talking with some people, what I'm surprised at is that for a while now, probably months or a year, people have come and requested of this board to extend the comment period. And they've given valid reasons on why to extend the comment period. And as commissioners, as I sit here or watched online, most of the time you give this stare, but you really don't care. You're not really listening to the residents when they come in and talk about extending public comment. What I find interesting, and I'm not going to get into because obviously you don't care, but what I find really interesting is that the definition of public comment, I'm not really sure where that comes from because when you actually read the actual Sunshine Law, it's very specific and outlines what public comment is and isn't, or is it basically. People are allowed to get up at this podium within a lot of time and say whatever they like to say during public comment. If they say, I don't like your shirt, doesn't, it's not business of coming in front of you, but that's their prerogative. But what I find most interesting out of this whole thing is that even though you ignored the residents asking for additional time to make public comment, which you ignored, now you're changing the rules and you have a vote, which I really find as interesting, having a vote to change the rules after you change the rules. And I know you're not going to respond to this question, maybe you will, but, and I've been an elected official and I've sat in positions like where you're at, and I've sat in positions where we allow public comment, and I've sat in positions when we changed rules and we changed policies and everything else. And there's a process that you go through when you legally make those changes. So I'm just curious today how you decided to make a change to public comment, shorten the length of time by which people have been requesting to extend the length of time. You've made that decision and you're making the decision to change the rules before you even vote on it. So I got a minute and 24, 23 seconds. I really want to give you the opportunity to explain this process that you're following. And I'll stand here for a minute and 16 seconds because me standing here, you're not responding to a simple question that I posed to any one of you or your solicitor, your standing solicitor. I posed this question, it's a simple answer. What gives you the authority to change the process in, before you actually take a vote to change the process? It's really amazing that you sit there and decide not to even ask a basic, answer a basic question. And maybe I'm wrong as far as the process of when you are supposed to change it and you can't even respond to that. That is really appalling.
We have two folks that would like to comment on Zoom. Maureen Laska. May I unmute yourself?
Yes. Hello. Good morning. This is Maureen Laska, Upper Providence Township, Oaks Print Inc. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are in the midst of celebrating Patriotism Month. Fly the flag, the American flag, show the red, white, and blue as much as possible. Wear your flag shirt and remember how blessed you are to be living in this greatest, in the greatest country this world has ever known, the United States of America. Given that the United States birthday is the 4th of July, the month of July has been designated Patriotism Month, we are taking pride in our history, our culture, our spirit, and our founding, including those three very special founding documents, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. Maybe during this month, you can refresh yourself on the contents of these great documents and the eternal truths they hold. I once heard a story where Uber driver asked a fare whether she thought the Constitution should be changed. She turned the tables around and proceeded to drill the driver on constitutional basics like what are the three branches of government and named three of the five rights contained in the First Amendment. Of course, the driver failed. She then asked the question, how can you propose changing a document for which you don't know the contents? To me, that's a good question. Thank you.
Or Lehman? Laura, you may unmute.
Hi. So first of all, what a distressing experience already. I am stunned. If you look at the screen, you can see that your priority is the time. Half the screen, I cannot even see the people who are speaking with the clock in a small block somewhere else. Your priorities are completely skewed. This is not okay. Mr. DiBello's question was very, very valid and for you to sit there and not answer it is disgusting. I mean, this should not be three minutes. Obviously, you have not passed that yet. Indeed, I also have worked with people in this county to try and get how to attend a meeting prominently posted so you don't have to dig for the link. That was not available. The number of things that I have to address today is the reason that we need more than three minutes to speak. I need to address literally how the continued actions by people in your planning commission are harming people in the various townships. And one of those actions is the fact that we have a chair of the planning commission who has falsely renovated an apartment building and those people are in danger. So not only do we have somebody who should not be in that position, but we also have health department officials that are doing nothing to help this situation with new victims being enlisted every day to live in this faulty apartment building. That is the responsibility of somebody you hired, you've known about, I showed you the grand jury information, all of it, yet you continue to leave him in charge and to have a planning commission that is going awry. They published false information in the comp plan. We have literally your planner was responsible for a lot of this that happened and takes no responsibility for it whatsoever. The health issue is a big deal, so I hope you will appoint somebody to get back to me. You have my name and number. Your own comp plan is also being prepared on false information because people are leaving Pennsylvania, yet the goal is to increase the health throughout the Montgomery County townships. The economic development corporation that our county or our township is preparing to pass is a complete conflict of interest. All of these things need a place to address with commissioners that will answer questions. So I hope nobody in Montgomery County will ever elect somebody who does not pledge to answer the questions of the constituents. Thank you.
There's no one else for public comment.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the June 29, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there a board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And I will make a motion that Raymond McGarry of Brown McGarry in Nemroth be appointed as interim county solicitor of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there a board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Ms. Calder.
Thank you. County staff routinely review departmental board practices and procedures to ensure consistency and best practices. With that in mind, we have updated the guidelines for public comment for the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meetings, and we are requesting board approval of the updated guidelines.
All right, I'll get a motion on the table. I will move that the public comment guidelines for Board of Commissioners meetings be amended to reflect the version attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Ms. Calder, so can you talk a little bit, the research that was done to make this recommendation?
Yes, we looked at obviously the Sunshine Act and recent case law regarding best practices and what most boards were doing with regard to the time allotted for public comment. And we also were looking at our boards across the county and all of them had one comment period as opposed to two. And so we want to be consistent.
Okay. Any questions?
Can you tell us the case law?
Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I do, yes. I've opposed all the public comment guidelines put forward by the board and I have a very simple approach. When I first took office, there was no limit to public comment. I think that's, we owe that to the public. If someone takes the time to travel to Narsetown to attend our board meeting or log on to Zoom to participate virtually, we should not limit their participation and cut off their time. That being said, a simple approach is simply to leave it up to the discretion of the chair and the solicitor. If things go off the rails, if it's disruptive to the meeting and has absolutely nothing to do with county government, or their time's exceeding an unreasonable limit, then the chair or the solicitor should step in and ask them to conclude and wrap up their comments. And that's a simple approach and I think we owe that to the public. So I'll be voting no on this amendment.
Do you have any comment? So we'll move on to a vote. I'm, do you want to do a roll call, Ms. Washington? Why don't you do a roll call?
Chair Lauren.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren.
Aye.
opposed.
Motion passes two to one.
We should table that.
Ms. Calder.
Yes.
Moving on to next.
Montgomery County supports our county library network in part by providing the building and furnishings for the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library. The county is currently engaged in a plan to renovate the current library located on Powell Street in Norristown. And the, during that period, the county seeks to enter into a lease agreement to temporarily house the library at Logan Square Center on Markley Street in Norristown. It is anticipated that the planning and design will be completed mid-year 2024 and that construction will begin late 2024 and be completed by early 2027. This lease will enable the library to continue to provide their services to residents while we engage in community-wide planning, design, and complete renovation of the building.
I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease agreement with Narsetown Center LP to house the Narsetown Public Library at the Logan Square Shopping Center for a four-year term and an annual rent as outlined. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
First of all, I support the renovation of the library, although I've opposed the contracts leading up to this point when it comes to construction management services and design because it seems to be too costly. I'm surprised at how high the cost is for this project already and nothing has begun on the site. But then when I look into this lease, from my understanding, it's about a million dollars a month to rent this space for a temporary library.
A year?
A year, I'm sorry, not a month, a year. A million dollars a year. And I can't justify that cost and I'm surprised we can't find something spaced at least that comes at a lower cost. So I'll be a no vote on this authorization.
Okay. We'll move on to a vote. Commissioner Winder, are you a aye?
Yes.
And I'm an aye.
And I'm a no.
Motion passes two to one. Authorization of a lease renewal with Camp Rainbow Incorporated.
Thank you. Camp Rainbow was founded in 1951 and offers children of Montgomery County a week-long overnight summer camping experience at a low cost to the family. Since 1993, Camp Rainbow, a nonprofit organization, has operated the camp on 18 acres of county-owned land along the Perkyomen Creek in Upper Southford Township. The camp's mission is to provide a safe and caring environment where campers can learn about community, healthy living, and personal responsibility. Up to 60 children per week participate in camp activities such as swimming, nature study, and crafts. The county and Camp Rainbow wish to continue the relationship which allows Camp Rainbow to operate on county property for six weeks during the summer.
I will make a motion by the Montgomery County Commissioners that the proper county officials are authorized to enter into a lease agreement with Camp Rainbow Incorporated, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, to allow for the operation of Camp Rainbow on county property under certain terms and conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calder. Silver?
Good morning, commissioners and staff. I am here today to request a final resolution and, oh. An authorization, can we switch to the annual action plan? So should I move forward with this one? Yes.
Yeah, we want to do it in this order. It's that the following resolution is what is up on the screen.
Okay, can we get back to the, we're, okay, that's fine. So we're going six. She's presenting.
Six.
Yep.
Good. Thank you. I'm here today to request an authorization and a resolution to authorize a submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or PADCED, for their emergency solutions grant funding, or ESG. This resolution to authorize the submission of a funding request is required per the grant. As a quick overview, the emergency solutions grant, ESG, is a federal source of funding out of the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And the eligible activities are for homeless services as a general sense, but you see listed those six there around rapid rehousing, emergency shelters, and assistance to families and individuals living outside. Montgomery County does receive a direct entitlement of these ESG funds from HUD and we allocate those, that funding through our yearly annual action plan, which I'll be speaking about next. So our allocation, federal entitlement this year was $291,298. But that's not why I'm asking for this resolution. This resolution has to do with the state's direct entitlement, which is $5.7 million, and to ask for some funding out of the state's direct entitlement of ESG as well. Next slide, please. So the application to request some of that funding is due August 17. The state does prioritize the rest of PA counties that do not directly receive an ESG entitlement. So this is a competitive funding process. We're sort of requesting funding from what's left over. And we have since 2018 requested funding through this competitive application process and have traditionally received about $150,000 to $180,000 from the state in these requests. We are asking for an approval to ask to the state a bit more this year. And Montgomery County is asking for more funding through this competitive grant application to, and it really is reflective of the increased shelter needs in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. So what we would put into the application, request to the state, would be to support our rapid rehousing programs at $150,000 and then two shelters, resources for human development serving single adults and the Salvation Army serving families with children. In the request, $150,000 and $250,000 and for a total request of $550,000. So thank you very much.
I will make a motion that the Office of Housing and Community Development, on behalf of the county of Montgomery, is hereby authorized to file the necessary documentation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in connection with an application for 2023 emergency solutions grant funding in the amount of $550,000 for the purpose of funding the county's Your Way Home Rapid Rehousing Program and Emergency Shelter. Be it further resolved that the county hereby authorizes the expenditure, expenditure of $550,000, which represents the 100% match required by the grant, to be paid using local funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Assistance Program. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Okay, now we're going back to five, the approval of the Housing and Community Development 2023 Annual Action Plan.
Teresa, I'll drop this to the top of your inbox. I can begin. I'll begin without the presentation. All right. Excuse the technical difficulties. Thank you, commissioners and staff. I'm here to request an authorization for the resolution to submit to HUD the 2023 Annual Action Plan, which outlines our, how we will spend our direct entitlements of funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, which are CDBG home and ESG dollars. As a quick reminder, this plan, annual action plan, is required by HUD every year and then every five years, we do a full consolidated plan, which will be due in 2025. Elements of this process include two public hearings. We held one on March 7th at 6:00 PM via Zoom as well as We held one on March 7th at 6:00 PM via Zoom, as well as June 20th, hybrid, both in person and via Zoom. Our application for these funding sources opened in March 1st and we put out specific, we actually extended the application process to solicit for more funding. Great, thank you. For, for more funding for homeless services as well, which is one eligible grant source for this funding. Then we had the, the draft action plan out for a 30-day public comment period from June 2nd to July 2nd. And with your approval today, we will then submit it to HUD by August 15th. May I go to slide three, please, Teresa? Thank you. Great. So these were our direct entitlement allocations this year of CDBG home and ESG. CDBG primarily funds community development activities, as well as some public and homeless services, just over 3.5 million this year. Home is a primary funding source to help with affordable housing development, and we had just under 1.5 this year. And then I touched on earlier our direct ESG entitlement for the year, which is for homeless supportive services at $291,000. Next slide, please. So with your approval today, after hearing all public comments during the 30-day public comment period, we have, we are requesting no changes to the initial funding recommendations. There's a quick overview here regarding the funding recommendations we will make to HUD. You see here under our Community Development Block Grant Program, four municipalities who have requested funding related to street improvements, sewers, and sidewalk improvements. Next slide, please. And then we also have three more municipalities. One's West Concha Hoffman, West Pots Grove, and Cheltenham. And then two public facility improvement projects, the Senior Adult Services of Montgomery County requesting building improvements, as well as Indian Creek Foundation, who serve homes for people with disabilities and renovations to their buildings as well. These are all eligible activities under CDBG. Next slide, please. And CDBG has a 15% cap, statutory cap, on the amount we can invest in public services. We do prioritize public service fundings for emergency shelter operations that you see mostly on here, our Salvation Armies, our Domestic Violence Shelter Laurel House, our Two Family Promise Shelters, and Resources for Human Development. We also fund some planning activities with the Housing Equality Center around fair housing compliance, as well as admin and a loan repayment. Next slide, please. Moving on to, from CDBG to home, you see the projects listed here, the developers that we would support through tenant-based rental assistance and/or acquisition and development dollars to help provide more housing affordability opportunities in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. And then finally, our Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG, budget, which are homeless services against supporting a rapid rehousing, and then our Emergency Shelter Program through Resources for Human Development. We match this funding with other sources, and with your resolution today, this match would also, excuse me, be approved. Next slide, please. So these matching sources include the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we invest to also help with Your Way Home and housing programs, as well as affordable housing development that you see here on the screen. Next slide, please. And then we also match with Medicaid dollars, the Housing Reinvestment Partnership Program, and for capital units and affordable housing opportunities for seniors in, with Elon Affordable Housing and Federation Housing. So again, with your resolution today, we will put this all in our annual action plan for an October 1 start date and a funding approval date. Thank you.
I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the 2023 Annual Action Plan and formally recommend the plan to the participating municipalities and nonprofit groups within Montgomery County and to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment?
Just, Ms. Silver, I have a question. Was the public comment periods, the sessions already took place, correct?
Yes, so our public comment was June 2nd through July 2nd, and we had an in-person and hybrid, so in-person and Zoom meeting on June 20th. And then even before the funding application was made available, we held a citizen participation meeting to hear about community needs on March 7th.
And what was the participation like?
Sure. We had about 15, no, 20 people at the March 7th meeting to talk about community needs and what the funding should go towards. And then when we had the funding out for the 30-day public comment period, we had four people show up to the hybrid meeting on, on June 20th.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Silver.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Silver. Next, we have the authorization of a community planning assistance contract for Lower Moreland Township School District. Mr. France.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we have a short-term contract on behalf of the Lower Moreland School District. They issued an RFP several months ago for a firm to do a study on 10-year enrollment projections, to which we replied and were awarded or designated for awarding of that contract. So this would be a 10-year enrollment projection study for the district that incorporate enrollment for the upcoming 2023 to 24 school year in September. The study will look at demographic trends, birth patterns, housing construction, housing sales activity, and other trends in service of creating a model that projects enrollments at each grade level across each school building for the next 10 years. This contract would be at a total cost of $8,874. The school district, as according to our policy on short-term contracts, would pay 75% of that cost, which would amount to $6,655. The contract would run from September 1st, 2023, to November 15th, 2023. And then finally, just a couple notes on the program itself. This is, we've done, this is actually our second study for the Lower Moreland School District. Our first one was back in 2016. So we're excited to go back and look at what has changed since then. And we've done approximately 14 of the 22 school districts in the county over the last 10 years. I think this is our 27th, give or take one, total study in this program. So excited to enter this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. France. I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the short-term contract for community planning assistance as outlined by Mr. France. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Mr. Edmonds.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf this morning of the MCTA Board, which are nine appointed citizens of Montgomery County. They have been concerned as a board for a long time with how the term limits in their Articles of incorporation create turnover and reappointment issues, especially for citizens who fill someone's unexpired term due to death or resignation. So the MCTA Board formed a subcommittee to look into possible changes to their Articles of incorporation and their other founding documents. After much deliberation last week, they passed a resolution proposing new language to fix the problem as required by the Municipality Authorities Act. So these changes would eliminate the term limits and make it clear when terms begin and end. This will preserve the staggered system that ensures everyone's terms don't end in the same year. And it also will bring the MCTA Board in line with most every other county-appointed board and commission. So on behalf of the MCTA Board, I'm bringing this Commissioner's resolution up for your consideration today. Should you pass it, the MCTA will then need to send formal articles of amendment to the state as required by law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an amendment to the Articles of incorporation of the Montgomery County Transportation Authority to remove any restriction on the total number of years that a board member may serve and to specify that each member's term will begin on January 1st and expire on December 31st of the fifth year of the term. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. I will make a motion to appoint Derek Lawson to the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority for a term to begin immediately and to expire on July 20th, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly-adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Move on to personnel. Ms. Halen.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's Personnel List. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, July 19th, 2023, with a timestamp of 8:30 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the July 20th, 2023 Personnel Presentation as given by the Chief Human Resources Officer, Catherine Halen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Advertisements, bids, RFIs, and RFPs.
Having bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for restroom renovations at Upper Schuylkill Valley Park. E-successful responders will provide demolition services for the old restroom and construction of a new, single-use restroom. Contracts will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidders. Two, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for fire pump construction services at the Emergency Operating Center. E-successful responder will provide construction services for the installation of two fire pumps with enclosures for the EOC garage and warehouse. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, bid on behalf of public safety for fencing. E-successful responder will provide perimeter and front gate fencing services for Public Safety Training Center. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Four, RFI on behalf of assets and infrastructure for food service providers for the Justice Center. Responders shall have the capacity to operate a for-profit food service program at the Justice Center Building. Five, RFI on behalf of Health and Human Services for health and wellness services for unhoused individuals. Responders will provide letters of interest to support and assist with the most complex cases of unhoused opioid users or inactive overdose to create or enhance a hospital-based or provider agency mobile services unit that will support and address the overdose issues within Montgomery County communities. Six, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for on-call general construction labor services. E-successful responders will provide construction project cleanup on an as-needed basis. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Seven, RFP on behalf of Human Resources for an employee benefits consultant. E-successful responder will provide the development, acquisition, and maintenance of group health, dental, and pharmaceutical plans and other group benefits for its employees and their dependents. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Eight, RFP on behalf of public safety for fire and range environmental services. E-successful responder will provide a solution for filter disposal services at the Tactical Response Training Center. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All bids, RFIs, and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.mccopa.org/purchasing.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisements of bids, RFIs, and RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
One, contract award, assets and infrastructure HVAC services for the Emergency Operating Center McCuskey Mechanical Contractors Incorporated of Blackwood, New Jersey, $116,100. Contract provides for a replacement chiller unit for the Emergency Operating Center Building in Eagleville. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, Health and Human Services Grant Program Administration Services, Genesis Housing Corporation of Norristown, PA, $800,000. Contract provides for project management, administration services, and direct services to support the Healthy Homes Production Grant Program. RFP 2327 was viewed by 31 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract will be three years from the date of contract execution with two optional annual renewal terms. Three, contract award, Health and Human Services Crisis Residential Program for Adults, Multiple Providers, $177,000. Contract provides for short-term, home-like residential environments to individuals experiencing a mental health crisis as a means to divert from inpatient care. RFP 2342 was viewed by 11 providers with three responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Contract is for a one-year term with four optional annual renewal terms. Awarded responders are Horizon House Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, and Montgomery County Emergency Service Incorporated. Four, contract award, Health and Human Services Lead Hazard Control Services, Genesis Housing Corporation of Norristown, PA, $762,000. Contract provides for management services for the Lead and Healthy Homes Program as a housing subrecipient for the Office of Public Health and the Office of Housing and Community Development. RFP 2346 was viewed by nine providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for the period of July 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024, with optional extensions through June 30, 2026. Five, contract award, Health and Human Services Lead Paint Analyzing Equipment, SCAPs Incorporated of Boyborne, Massachusetts, $27,650. Contract provides for a handheld detection system for the measurement of lead-based paint. Equipment is proprietary and the only unit accepted by HUD and the EPA for testing residential, daycare schools, and other such properties. Six, contract award, Human Resources Staffing Services, Robert Half International of Wayne, PA. Contract provides for as-needed staffing services for various county departments. Services are provided at an hourly rate range of $70 to $100 per hour, dependent on position required. Services are available through an HGAC by cooperative contract. Seven, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software, Civic Plus of Manhattan, Kansas, $53,375.09. Contract provides for maintenance, support, and hosting services, along with additional storage for videos for the county's website. Software is proprietary. Contract period is 9/1/2023 to 8/31/2024. Eight, contract award, Public Safety Firefighting Foam Disposal Service, Clean Earth Firemetal Solutions Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, $51,658. Contract provides disposal services of synthetic firefighting foam used for fighting high-hazard, flammable liquid fires. RFP 2338 was viewed by nine providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract term will be from date of contract execution through 12/31/2023, with one optional annual renewal based on grant funding availability. Nine, contract award, Public Safety Software Maintenance Motorola Solutions of Chicago, Illinois, $572,500. Contract provides for the annual system services support for the 911 Motorola Public Safety Radio System and Microwave Network. System is proprietary. Ten, contract award, Youth Center Tree Removal Services, J.C. Lockheed Enterprises LLC of Green Lane, PA, $31,700. Contract provides for the removal of approximately 60 dead and dying trees. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. RFP 2349 was viewed by 26 firms with five responding. Eleven, contract award, Recovery Office, Community Engagement Services, 3x3 Design U.S. LLC of Jupiter, Florida, $89,000. Contract provides for community engagement services to fully inform the recovery plan project to provide a community facility or facilities in Norristown, including creation of an inventory of community programs and providers in Norristown, identification and documentation of Norristown-focused community partners and services through meetings, discovery processes, and engagement. Facilitate identification and assault by community not currently available, and establish a program of services to be accommodated in various facilities. Assist in determining an operational plan for future facilities. RFP 2321 was viewed by 71 firms with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Twelve, contract award, Youth Center Food Service, U.S. Food Service of Valentine, PA, $150,000. Contract provides for purchase of food products for the Youth Center Food Services Division. Contract is available through the Tri-State Food Services Group Cooperative. Contract term is for a one-year period through 6/30/24. Thirteen, contract award, Youth Center Food Service Professors Incorporated of Harrisburg, PA, $25,000. Contract provides for the purchase of food products due to supply chain constraints from the current contracted provider. Food products are available through a PA CoStarz contract through 6/30/2024. Fourteen, contract renewal, Information and Technology Solutions Fiber Connectivity, Crown Castle Fiber of Warrenton, PA, $465,000. Contract provides support and maintenance for the county's dark fiber connectivity and ISP services as per RFP 1416. Renewal is the fifth of five optional annual renewal terms. Fifteen, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Construction Inspection Services, Penone Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $16,000. Original contract provided for full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the rehabilitation of County Bridge 101 located on Old Gravel Pike over Swamp Creek in Lower Frederick Township. Amendment provides for unanticipated engineering services required due to damages sustained during flood events and a time extension of the contract through 2/21/2024. Sixteen, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Rehabilitation of County Bridge 101 in Lower Frederick Township. Loftus Construction Incorporated of Cinnamons in New Jersey, $56,000. Original contract provided for the rehabilitation of Montgomery County Bridge 101, Old Gravel Pike over Swamp Creek in Lower Frederick Township. Amendment provides for additional unanticipated rehabilitation services required due to damages sustained during flood events and a time extension of contract through 2/21/2024. Seventeen, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Dredging Services, James Arkany Excavating and Paving Incorporated of Collegeville, PA, $75,825. Original contract provided for dredging of the Ford Bay to the Schuylkill Canal just north of Lock 60 in Upper Providence Township and stabilizing the banks of the tributary to the canal. Amendment provides for unanticipated repairs of a retaining wall at the end of the Ford Bay adjacent to the dam. Eighteen, contract amendment, Planning Commission Construction Services for the Chester Valley Trail Project, Allen A. Myers LP of Orsester, PA, $2,682,682. Allen A. Myers LP of Orsester, PA, $2,606,82. Original contract provided for construction of the Chester Valley Trail. Amendment provides for unanticipated major redesign services at the trail location and related stormwater management facilities within the Pico Energy Corridor portion of the project area. Seventeen, contract renewals and four amendments for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We have awards of contract for emergency procurement.
Yes, there's one contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, HVAC Temporary Equipment Rental, Industrial Drying Solutions of Iberia, Louisiana, not to exceed $30,000. Contract provides for rental of chillers at the Norristown Public Library Building while construction of a new building occurs.
I'll make a motion by the county commissioners that an actual emergency existed as defined by Section 1802b of the County Code, thereby permitting the county of Montgomery through its chief clerk, chief operating officer, to enter into such contracts without meeting the requirements of Section 1802 of the County Code, as may be required to maintain HVAC service at the Norristown Public Library. Be it further resolved that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Industrial Drying Solutions of New Iberia, Louisiana, to provide the rental of a chiller for the Norristown Public Library at an estimated cost not to exceed $30,000. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract, Assets and Infrastructure, Major Construction Projects.
One, contract award, Demolition Services, Panco Construction, Incorporated of Doylestown, PA, Contract provides for the demolition of the former Montgomery County Prison located on Erie Street in Norristown. Specification 6511 was viewed by 58 providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, contract award, Building Environmental Services, Freeman Peterson, Incorporated of Musick, PA, $59,000. Contract provides for environmental engineering and hazardous material services for the 18 West Erie Street Building. Multiple firms solicited through the project-enabling process. Three, contract award, Fiber Services for the Justice Center, Crown Castle of Philadelphia, PA, $38,400. Contract provides for construction of fiber entry into the Justice Center. Services are proprietary. Four, contract award, Justice Center signage, Fresh Artists of Philadelphia, PA, $78,719. Contract provides for the fabrication, installation, and showcasing of local youth art around the Justice Center. Artwork is proprietary. Five, contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, Fire Pump Installation, Multiple Contractors. Contract provides for two fire pumps with enclosures for the EOC garage and warehouse. specification 6510 was viewed by 23 providers with seven responses received. Contracts are awarded to the lowest responsible bidders as follow. Fire Protection, Oliver Fire Protection and Security of King of Prussia, PA, $729,800. Electrical, A. and Lynch Company, Incorporated of Spring City, PA, $102,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
On the negative vote.
Okay. Motion passes, two to one. Awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
One, contract award, Automatic License Plate Reader, Plate Logic LLC of Exton, PA, $25,560. Contract provides for automatic license plate reader equipment for Malvern Borough, Chester County. Equipment and services are available through a PA CoStarz contract.